Meeting's called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wathner?
Here.
Councilmember O'Mara?
Here.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Stanger?
Here.
Councilmember Quinn?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a forum.
For approval, the Journal of the Meeting of November 18th, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move to Communications. Madam Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, Sixth District.
Receive file on the county councilor, be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number two, Third District?
Receive and file.
So ordered. Item number three, Sixth District?
Receive file on the county councilor, be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number four, Fifth District?
Receive file on the county councilor, be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation in the same motion for item number five.
So ordered. Madam Chair, moving on to Road and Bridge Matters. Item number one, Third District?
Receive file on the street, be accepted for maintenance as requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, Third District?
Receive file contract in amount not to exceed $1,658,408.78. Be awarded to KCI Construction Company, the lowest responsive bidder. Pending federal concurrence as recommended, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Chair, moving on to other communications. Item number one? Receive and file, and that will be the order. Item number two, Second District?
Receive file and refer to the county councilor, to the Department of Planning, to the Department of Revenue, and to the Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered. Item number three, Fifth District?
Receive file and refer to the Department of Highways and Traffic, to the Department of Planning, and to the county council.
So ordered. Item number four, Sixth District?
Receive file and the deposit agreement A, deposit agreement B, and the subdivision plat be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five? Receive and file, same motion for item number six, and that will be the order. Item number seven, First, Third, and Sixth Districts? Receive and file, and that will be the order. Item number eight, All Districts? Receive, file, and refer to the county auditor, and that will be the order. Item number nine, Seventh Districts?
Receive file and the agreement be approved as recommended. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10? Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number 11, and that will be the order. Item number 12? Oh, I see it, I'm sorry. Receive, file, and refer to the county auditor, and that will be the order. Item number 13, Sixth Districts?
Receive file on the county councilor, be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. No add-ons, Madam Chair. Okay. No add-ons. That's not here. There are no reports of special committees this evening, so we'll move to the public forum. We have, is it 13 speakers? Ten speakers. We ask that you come forward when Jim calls your name, give your name, repeat your name and address again for the records, and keep your comments to three minutes. She will alert you when your time is up, and we ask you to bring your comments to a close. First speaker this evening is Phil Duval.
My name is Phil Duval. As I've said already to one of the councilmen's administrative assistants, I'm not happy tonight. I'm extremely angry, not just because of what happened last week. I already knew what was going to happen last week. I'm on record of stating that that was going to happen. But I think I'm angry with you. I'm angry with you about the Minority Inclusion Bill, that I see no action. St. Louis American this week says, "The fire that Bob McCullough started." I'm warning you now, like I warned you 14 years ago, about the fire that just happened last week. If you don't move on this Minority Inclusion Bill, I promise you, not a physical fire, but there's going to be a fire on you if you cannot pass the bill or start talking about it. That's number one. I'm asking, under the Sunshine Act, I want some accessibility. Has there been any emails, communications from your back rooms to see if you've even had a discussion, instead of it just be sitting here until the end of the year? Congratulations, Mr. Stinger, but please don't offend us in the black community and wait to January and then try to roll something out like you were the author of it or the movement of it, because to me, that's going to be offensive to Mr. Dooley and to Hazel Erby. So if any of you politically think that that's going to be some cover and, "Oh, we're going to move it forward," that's going to backfire. I was told that, "Well, there's only two Republicans." I don't care. People in West County, black or white or minorities, they want to work too. This isn't a minority or a majority. This isn't Democrat, this isn't Republican. This is people needing to work, and when you fail to do something, you become responsible. Mr. O'Mara, I said to you something nicely last week, but I got a message from Mr. Shahid. He says he really doesn't give a damn about meeting now. If he wants to meet, he'll meet in here. Now again, this can be prevented if you would just take some courageous action. Thirty-five seconds I have left. Last week, we couldn't even meet. I used to be a former military police. I can't come in the meeting without military police in this building? Who are they protecting? Us or you? And what is it that they're protecting? Your secret, silent? As public officials, I'm pleading to you to either change your mind or your heart or to compromise, because if you do not, I can assure you, like I assured you 14 years ago...
That's three minutes, Madam Chair.
...we're going to have problems. And I'm only yielding out of respect for you, because the rest of you, I really don't give a damn about three minutes. And lastly, we said Charlie Dooley, that was enough for 10 years. It's been long enough. The shit that y'all pulling in here has been long enough.
Next speaker is Mark Moore. Mark Moore.
This is a reading from the St. Louis Argus dated May 1919, and I think it has incredible relation to these times. So, "In these strenuous times of strife, when all the world is at turmoil, when men are giving their lives for freedom, let us not forget that the Negro race, aside from giving their best manhood for the cause of a world democracy, has a desperate and stubborn battle to fight within the bounds of our own beloved country. The demon, racial prejudice, has for years had its forces arrayed against us as a race, and even now, when black men are going to uphold the honor and glory of this country, prejudice stalks abroad in the land of the home and the free, in the land of the free and the home of the brave, seeking in a manner to devour the Negro race entirely. Color prejudice has for years wielded its unjust influence with the aim of civilization. It has wound its gripping folds around the cause of Christianity. It has thrown reason to the winds and played havoc with the plans of heaven. It is the common enemy of the Negro race and can be found in every nook and cranny of human habitation, in the homes, in the schools, colleges, in workshops, factories, in streetcars, railway trains, in the relations between law officers, and even in the house of God. Prejudice lurks with its poisonous fangs, ready and waiting to sink the deadly venom into the progress of the Negro race. Men of every nationality who believe in a world's democracy, who believe in Christianity, who are able to recognize right from wrong should turn their faces back to the time of the lowly Nazarene and take again the lessons that he taught. That lesson of love for all mankind, which knows no color, which practices no hate, but realizes that every human being has a soul and that every man can be made better by being taught the lesson which makes men strive to live for the good that they can do for each other." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ashley Burna.
I'll ask that the time start as soon as I say my name. Will you reset that so that I have time to say my name, please? My name is Burna, you need an extra few seconds. I'm Ashley Burna. Today, I'd like to talk to you just a little bit about two different things. First is the tradition in which St. Louis is operating their government, and the second area is what we must crush out of our city of government first. The tradition of not allowing folks to enter our government buildings and to access government is wrong, and it is necessary for the council to address this immediately. Back in August, I was with a state senator, and we were threatened arrest upon delivering petitions right across the way. If you notice today, you'll notice that it is boarded up as if it doesn't belong to us anymore, as if my tax dollars and your tax dollars and everyone else's tax dollars did not pay for it. Threatened arrest in a United States country, in St. Louis, this is unacceptable, and this is something that you must change today. When I came in today, the escalators were being boarded off, and I could see that these windows had been barricaded as well. Multiple times, I have come to this meeting after working a shift, dropping my son at daycare, and returning back, and only to be turned away at the door at, I'm told, at 5:58 PM. When I came today at 5:58 PM, no more than four of you sat in your chairs. So if it's only fair that I cannot sign my list until 5:58, the list is removed, then you need to be more than in your seats and ready to go at 5:58 and ready to receive those names. Otherwise, the time needs to be extended so that the working people, the people in North County, which there is much concern for, have time to proceed down I-170, the 45 minutes it takes in traffic, and be able to sign up and present our notes. Moving on, we must crush this tradition of crushing other people out of our society. Representative Hazel, I am not speaking to you right now. I am speaking to your white brothers and sisters that look like me. We have to remove this level of racism out of our country right now. You all hold the purse strings, and yet you want to give the cops more and more money. Your bill's on today, almost a half a million dollars. We have yet to account for the money that has been spent on tear gas and zip ties and not keeping a single person safe in this community. The officers relinquish their responsibility by simply asking for our people, though considered protesters but are really just concerned citizens, to be responsible for the protection, and so therefore, you all need to be responsible for the white people and the racist remarks. You can see them online, you can see them in your halls, I'm sure you can see them around your Thanksgiving/Christmas table. And it's this time that this must end, and if so, if the protection for the community is going to be put on the shoulders of concerned citizens who receive no pay, then the protection for future church fires in North County, for businesses' fires, and the fires started by word of mouth, through racist thug actions, and angry black people being shown through the media, you must take account for that, and you must stop it. You must speak to your peers now, and it must end.
That's three minutes, Madam Chair.
Our children are exsac, and we will no longer allow them to be sacrificed because no one else has the courage to step up and tell them to step off.
Next speaker is Ernest Brooks.
On a lighter note, I came before the county council back in late May of this year with concerns about the deplorable conditions of Oak Grove Cemetery and 7,800 St. Charles Rock Room. My purpose tonight is to thank the following people for their help. I wish to thank Councilman Patrick Dolan and his assistant, Eric Fay, for all the help and support they have given me. I wish to thank the St. Louis County Public Works Department. I'd like to thank Beverly Taylor, who's with the St. Louis County Municipal Prosecuting Attorney's Office on the ninth floor here, and Councilman Hazel Erby. There are many improvements that have been made, but there are more improvements that are needed. I must tell you, when I came before this council, I didn't think I would be getting any attention, but I was wrong. I want to thank you for your help and support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is James Jewell.
Thank you for having us today. There's been a lot of talk in recent months, in recent days especially, about the police and how we should respect them and thank them for the services that they provide to our community. So I wanted to come here today, and I wanted to tell you very clearly that I do not respect the St. Louis area police. That includes the city police and the county police, and it certainly includes all of the individual municipal police departments within the county. I don't respect the police because it has become apparent to me in recent months what has been obvious to many people in St. Louis for years, which is that the police institutions themselves are diseased with racism and with a lust for violence and a lust for power. This is really the only way that I can explain the actions that have been taken in recent months. The racism aspect explains how a white police officer can shoot and kill an unarmed black teenager and not only face no legal consequences, but somehow raise several hundred thousand dollars, apparently as a reward for his actions. And the lust for violence and the lust for power explains basically everything else the police have done since then. It explains why they train assault weapons on innocent American citizens in broad daylight. It explains why they shoot tear gas into crowds of innocent peaceful protesters, including children, without provocation. And it ties in with what I think is the most important thing here, which is the audacity that the police have to continuously lie to the public about their own involvement in the protests. I've attended several protests in Ferguson and in the St. Louis area over the last few months, and I can tell you that without exception, every incidence of violence that I have seen has been instigated by the police. They treat these protests as though it's a sport. You know, they get dressed up in their uniforms with their riot gear and their batons, and they go out on the field, and you can see them taking pleasure in harassing protesters and intimidating protesters and using violence against protesters. And then they lie about it. They issue press statements that say, "Oh, well, the protesters were violent, so we had no choice but to use force against them." And those are lies, and they do it because they know that the Post-Dispatch and KMOV and other legacy media outlets in St. Louis will disseminate their statements as though they are true, because apparently journalism no longer exists in St. Louis at those outlets. But thankfully, we're at a time in human history where individuals don't rely on newspapers in order to ascertain the truth of events in their area, and I've reached the point where I no longer believe anything that the police say, and I am far from the only youngish, white professional in this boat. So to close, I just want you to understand the extent of the credibility problem that you have, because you haven't done anything to rein in the abuses and the lies of the police, and I want you to understand that it's only going to get worse if you continue to do nothing. Thank you.
Next speaker is Molly Greider.
I won't curse at you tonight, I promise. Just came again. How's it going, everybody? Anybody get tear gassed last week? I did, a few times. I wasn't even protesting. I was mostly trying to keep other people safe. A friend of mine and I talked a young man out of throwing a block of concrete toward the police, you know, documenting what was going on. The new tear gas that the police bought actually hurts much less than the expired stuff they used in August, so I'm perfectly okay with that money being spent. I do have a problem with Chief Belmar's statement. He made this on NPR a couple weeks ago. Only criminals got tear gassed. Peaceful protesters did not get tear gassed. My criminal record consists of one speeding ticket for going 11 miles over. I'm not, and it's from 2010, I'm not really, you know, a thug, a criminal, I'm not violent, so I'm not entirely sure how I got tear gassed. I'm not entirely sure how last week, on Tuesday, trying to leave Ferguson, when the police ordered us to, my friends and I were trapped in a parking lot by two armored cars while the police on the megaphone said, "You have to leave. You must get in your cars and leave." How? They were blocking us and tear gassing us. When we finally could leave, when we could back out, police on foot, wearing gas masks, lined up and blocked us into the parking lot again. We couldn't leave. How are we supposed to get out? I'm not sure. Maybe, I guess you could say I shouldn't have gone to Ferguson, but people live in Ferguson. People do business in Ferguson. There's no reason that we should have been blocked into a parking lot and tear gassed repeatedly. When we could finally leave, we had to drive through tear gas again, because cops seem to think it's fun to throw around. It took us probably 45 minutes or an hour to get out of a parking lot that had maybe 10 cars in it. When the police told us to leave, this happens over and over and over, but I guess only criminals get tear gassed. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Susan Clark.
I'm Susan Clark. I live at 9836 Wild Deer Road in Ladue. I'm another criminal who's been tear gassed this last week and hit with a baton and cleared out of sidewalks that I'm legally allowed to assemble on while not protesting, simply observing protests as a legal observer. I don't know where you all have been, but we need leaders in this community. We don't have them. We have a governor who has instituted a state of emergency that didn't manage to protect anybody or anything that needed protecting. We have mayors and police departments who can't control their cities and their towns, who can't talk to the people who live there. I've lived here for 29 years, and for 29 years, I have known that this was a racist community, and I've had pinpricks of racism inflicted on me and my family every week for 29 years, but I could ignore them. I could go home to my nice, white, upper-middle-class neighborhood and forget about it. I can't do that any longer, and I don't believe you ought to be able to either. This is an untenable situation. You are our elected leaders. Lead.
Next speaker is Gloria Nickerson. Gloria Nickerson?
Are you making your time? Are you making your...
Do I have remaining time?
A minute and a half.
I certainly yield it. I yield it to you.
Ms. Nickerson?
That isn't how it works.
Do you have remaining time?
I'm sorry, unless you sign up, you can...
I cannot yield my time to a previous speaker?
To a previous speaker?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Time is precious, and we're all paying for it here, so we might as well utilize it. So let's do a little gut check, because I watched each and every one of your faces when a member of your community, one of your constituents, told you she was tear gassed, and not a blink was made. How many of you up here, please show your hands, and I know you normally don't respond, but this will be a gut check to see whether or not you are in tune with the people here. How many of you have been out at a protest site in front of the Ferguson Police Department after 7 o'clock PM? Raise your hands. Seeing no hands, please, media, note, no one here is willing to admit that they have been to a protest site. They are keeping us unsafe, and if the people and leadership cannot hear us, then I will speak to the people that can hear us. This is no longer allowed in our communities. This is no longer allowed in our country. If you cannot hear our brothers and sisters, who don't look like me, screaming for them, then I will scream too. Our kids are at stake, our brothers, our sisters, our family members, our husbands, our wives are at stake, because we will not allow them to be sacrificed for the process of kindness, and this is our tradition anymore. If you all are not brave enough to walk to a protest site, each and every one of you today, then I guarantee you, you do not have the courage to do what it takes to stop us from getting killed. Our families are getting killed, not people like me, but people like the members in my family. People like the members in this audience are being killed. Can you hear anyone? Do I have to be louder?
That was the remaining time, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
My name is Gloria Nickerson, and I think everybody knows why I am here tonight. I'm here about the Minority Inclusion Bill. It's kind of sad that many in St. Louis County have spoke here over and over, month after month. This bill's been lingering now for six months. We have an executive order that's been signed. I've been told there's two or three people holding it up. I'm not really sure. I know that there have been some amendments, but I want to caution you all, with all the uprising that we have in St. Louis County, and I'm not just speaking about Ferguson, I'm saying St. Louis County, is this the way we want to close our 2015 books at St. Louis County, that we cannot get one small piece of legislation that would be so inclusive of all contractors in St. Louis County? I don't think we want that to happen, but everybody up here needs to remember that it's the taxpayers, minority businesses, and all that pay your salaries, and please consider getting this taken care of. We only meet a couple more weeks this year, and whatever indifference there are, there's some kind of way that can be worked out. Thank you.
Next speaker is Town Sullivan.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I think you need to give some further consideration to Bill Number 260 before voting on its final passage. It is a contract not to exceed $24,460 to provide a study of the HVAC system at the NAR Central Health Center in Pine Lawn. Poor temperature control is said to be the problem. Several things about this don't add up. To begin with, the building doesn't seem to be that old. Who put the HVAC system in? Is it the original system? When were the problems first detected? What about contacting the original contractor? There are dozens of companies capable of doing a study, yet it's odd that only two firms responded to the request for qualifications. But is the study really needed? It would seem any experienced heating and cooling firm could tell what the problems are for little or nothing. The proposed contract is with Faith Group LLC, a company that seems to not be involved in heating and cooling. According to its website, under "What We Do," it lists command and control centers, compliance programs, emergency response planning, information technology, safety management systems, and security. Nothing about heating and cooling. I think this needs to be looked into further. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Final speaker this evening is Charles Wade.
Hi, I'm Cassandra Butler, and I'm taking Charles Wade's spot. I basically just want to talk about my real concern for the lack of deployment of the National Guards in the city of Ferguson Monday evening. In particular, I understand the National Guards, it seems, were deployed, the 700 Guards that there were in the city were deployed in St. Louis City and in Clayton and maybe some other place, but not Ferguson. And the day after, we'll say Tuesday, when the Unified Command had their press conference, Chief Belmore said that the Police Department of Ferguson was considered ground zero, and so therefore they weren't deployed, no one was deployed on West Florissant, and I'm still not clear about his explanation of why no one was deployed on West Florissant besides, well, let me say that. And actually, then, last week, or last week, the Chief of, Chief Jackson in my city of Ferguson said he was also confused too. He said at the beginning of November, National Guards, the plan was that National Guards would be in Ferguson, but somehow by the middle of November, that plan was changed, and he is clueless to why that plan was changed. And it almost seemed like he was even unaware that the initial plan to have National Guard in Ferguson was no longer the case. So, but it seems like Chief Belmore, Belmore had some understanding of the change in that plan. So it seems like in the Unified Command that the St. Louis County Police had some, some knowledge and maybe some influence in how the National Guards were deployed. I know a lot of people are, are putting blame on Governor Nixon for that, but I, he deployed the National Guard. I would think how they was, how the Guards were allocated would have been delegated to, to management that were on the ground, like the Unified Command, like the highway control, highway troopers and/or at St. Louis County. Seems like Chief Belmore had a lot of information, and he answered the question, he chose to answer the question at the press conference. So as the police chief does report to you or report to the council, I very much hope that the council will investigate and see what role we had in how the National Guards were deployed. Thank you.[799.01][799.01](applause)
I'd just like to say, before we go to introduction of bills, I had thought about writing a statement to express my feelings about the events of the past week, and I did not do that. It would have been wise for me to do it, because when I do speak about it, I probably tend to say more than I want to say or, or to, you know, to become emotional about it. But I do, I agree with the speakers that as a body here, the elected officials sitting here, for us to go through our daily routine after what just happened in St. Louis County and us not say anything is, it's not doing our jobs. We do need to take a stand. We do need to at least make a statement about what happened, because I don't understand any of it. You talk about somebody being confused. I don't understand the time of the announcement. I don't understand the prosecuting attorneys who appear to be a defense attorney. I don't understand why the National Guard, I'm sitting there watching on television, and yeah, I've been out, I have been out to the site, and I think, Molly, some of them know, I've been out there. I haven't been marching, and I haven't protested, but I was out there the day that Michael Brown was shot. I was out there every day for at least three weeks of it, and, and in meetings daily, two and three meetings with every group who asked me to meet, I'm with them. And, and so, and then I represent Ferguson, which is unlike the other council members. So I have, you know, these are the people that I represent. You know, last week, I heard, I heard at what I saw happening to my community. I was sitting there watching on TV, and I saw the fires, and I kept thinking, where is the National Guard that was out? Well, you know, where are they? It just appeared that, that it was happening, and no, there was no one, not a, not a fireman, not the National Guard, not anyone. You didn't see anyone at the scene. And so, and then I, I think I posted on Facebook, where is the National Guard? And somebody said, "In Clayton, at the Galleria Plaza Front and that." I don't understand. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm not done with it, and I do plan to, to make my feelings known to the governor, to whoever will listen, and I, I'm not done with it yet. So I don't know about the rest of my fellow council members, but as elected officials, we should be involved.[981.43][981.43](applause)
Bill Number 271, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the budget for the General Fund for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the General Fund, the sum of $261,91,014, to be placed to the credit of the respective departments, offices, boards, commissions, agencies, and funds of the St. Louis County Government as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 272, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the budget for the Special Road and Bridge Fund for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Special Road and Bridge Fund, the sum of $21,687,407, to be placed to the credit of the county road system and to the credit of the Department of Highways and Traffic for general operations, and further appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Special Road and Bridge Fund, the sum of $27,770,576, to be placed to the credit of the arterial road system, all as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 273, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the budget for the Health Fund for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Health Fund, the sum of $59,149,705, to be placed to the credit of the Department of Health as provided for in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 274, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the budget for the Park Maintenance Fund for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Park Maintenance Fund, the sum of $28,852,004, to be placed to the credit of the Department of Parks and Recreation, as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 275, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Spirit of St. Louis Airport Enterprise Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Spirit of St. Louis Airport Enterprise Fund, the sum of $29,946,758, to be placed to the credit of the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 276, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Debt Service Fund, the sum of $7,731,632, for the payment of interest fees and principal for maturity retirement of the Public Improvement Bonds of St. Louis County, Missouri for the fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 277, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Police Civil Defense Grant Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $416,649, from the unappropriated balance of the Police Civil Defense Grant Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 278, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the St. Louis County Municipal Police Academy Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $905,805, from the unappropriated balance of the St. Louis County Municipal Police Academy Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 279, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Assessment Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Assessment Fund, the sum of $13,059,685, to be placed to the credit of the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 280, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Sewer Lateral Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Sewer Lateral Fund, the sum of $3,052,333, to be placed to the credit of the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 281, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Transportation Trust Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Transportation Trust Fund, the sum of $24 million, to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 282, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Lambert East Perimeter Tiff Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, and appropriating and setting apart the sum of $1,601,502, from the unappropriated balance of the Lambert East Perimeter Tiff Fund, to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 283, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Record Preservation Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $648,297, from the unappropriated balance of the Record Preservation Fund, to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 284, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Police Air Support Program Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, and appropriating and setting apart the sum of $250,000, from the unappropriated balance of the Police Air Support Program Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 285, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the North Point Forest Subdivision Mid Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $34,565, from the unappropriated balance of the North Point Forest Subdivision Mid Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 286, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Children's Service Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Children's Service Fund, the sum of $17,791,441, to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 287, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Cable TV Government Access Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $85,000, from the unappropriated balance of the Cable TV Government Access Fund, to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 288, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Convention and Recreation Trust Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $8,490,105, from the unappropriated balance of the Convention and Recreation Trust Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 289, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Water Service Line Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Water Service Line Fund, the sum of $3,301,158, to be placed to the credit of the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 290, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Solid Waste Management Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Solid Waste Management Fund, the sum of $1,495,000, to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 291, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance appropriating from the unappropriated balance of the Public Mass Transit Tax Fund for public transportation purposes, 100% net Tiff transfers out of the amount received by St. Louis County from January 1, 2015, through December 31, 2015, from the sales tax levied by ordinance number 17,035, and providing for dispersing the same to Metro. Bill Number 292, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adapting the Highway Capital Construction Program Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, in the amount of $40,752,150, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Transportation Highway Fund, the sum of $16,973,800, and further appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the Federal Aid Urban Trust Fund, the sum of $23,778,778,350, for the support of the 2015 capital construction programs. Bill Number 293, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance approving and adopting the Residential Energy Loan Program Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2015, appropriating and setting apart the sum of $1,144,360, from the unappropriated balance of the Residential Energy Loan Program Fund to be credited to the accounts as provided in the budget for fiscal year 2015. Bill Number 294, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance establishing tax rates to be levied on all real and tangible personal property in St. Louis County, and on all other taxable property in St. Louis County. For the General Fund, Special Road and Bridge Fund, Health Fund, Park Maintenance Fund, and the Debt Service Fund for the fiscal year 2015, the tax rates hereby established shall be permanent and shall continue in effect until superseded by a tax levy ordinance passed at such time as provided by law. Bill Number 295, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance amending Chapter 201, Title II, St. Louis County Revised Ordnance since 1974, as amended personnel general by repealing and reenacting Section 201.190, and amending Chapter 202, Title II, St. Louis County Revised Ordnance since 1974, as amended personnel classified service by repealing and reenacting Section 202.360, 202.365, and 202.366 pertaining to compensation of various classes of county employees. Bill Number 296, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $250,000 from the Missouri Department of Economic Development, appropriating the same for support of a project to rehabilitate the Grillsink Facility in North St. Louis County, authorizing the county executive, the director of planning, and the director of the Office of Community Development to execute necessary documents in support of said project. Bill Number 297, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $225,000 from Washington University, appropriating such amount as is received during the first year of the grant term for support of the STD/HIV Prevention Training Center, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 298, introduced by Councilmember Quinn, and ordinance amending ordinance number 25,609 by repealing and reenacting Section 2 pertaining to a contract with Global Import Solutions LLC for lease of office and warehouse space in the Spirit Edison Center. Bill Number 299, introduced by Councilmember Stanger, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with LF Construction Incorporated for improvements to Revis Barrick Road, McKenzie Road, AR-1413. Bill Number 300, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, and ordinance amending Chapter 1105, Title 11, St. Louis County Revised Ordnance since 1974, as amended Department of Highways and Traffic by repealing and reenacting Section 1105.046 pertaining to contracts with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission. Bill Number 301, introduced by Councilmember Stanger, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with South Ridge Condom Menu Association for improvements to streets in the parking lot within the South Ridge condominium complex and for transfer of maintenance responsibility. Bill Number 302, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance amending ordinance number 24,579 by repealing and reenacting Section 5 pertaining to a contract with Unum Life Insurance Company of America for administration of employee long-term and short-term disability programs, and a contract with Minnesota Life Insurance Company for civilian and police life insurance programs. Bill Number 403, introduced by Councilmember Quinn, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to grant Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District MSD an easement and two temporary construction licenses for installation and maintenance of a sanitary force main sewer in Faust Park. Bill Number 304, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance amending Chapter 616, Title VI, St. Louis County Revised Ordnance since 1974, as amended county parks, parkways, and recreational areas by repealing and reenacting Sections 616.230 and 616.231 pertaining to various user fees and assessments related to use of county park facilities and services. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you.
Perfection of bills. Bill Number 8, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Hold, please.
Bill Number 218, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Please hold.
Bill Number 231, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold.
So.
Bill Number 241, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Hold, please.
Bill Number 262, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Hold, please.
Bill Number 266, introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 266.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 266 is perfected.
Bill Number 267, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up and move for perfection of Bill Number 267. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 267 is perfected.
Bill Number 268, introduced by Councilmembers Wassinger and Quinn.
I move to perfect Bill Number 268.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 268 is perfected.
Bill Number 269, introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
I take it up. I move perfection of Bill Number 269.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 269 is perfected.
Bill Number 270, introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember Erby.
Please hold.
Final passage of bills.
Bill Number 253, introduced by Councilmembers Dolan for O'Meara, Dolan, Dolan for Stanger, and Quinn.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 253. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 253, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 253 is finally passed.
Bill Number 254, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 254.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 254, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 254 is finally passed.
Bill Number 255, introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember Stanger.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 255.
Aye.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 255, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 255 is finally passed.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 69, introduced by Councilmembers Quinn and O'Meara.
I'd like to take it up. I move final passage of Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 69.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 69, there are seven ayes.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 69 is finally passed.
Bill Number 256, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 256.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 256, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 256 is finally passed.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 257, introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage of Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 257.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 257, there are seven ayes.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 257 is finally passed.
Bill Number 258, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 258.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilwoman Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 258, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 258 is finally passed.
Bill Number 259, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 259.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilwoman Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 259, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 259 is finally passed.
Bill Number 260, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Um, hold on, Bill Number 260, please.
Bill Number 261, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 261.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilwoman Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 261, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 261 is finally passed.
Bill Number 263, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Madam Chair, I would respectfully ask that we hold that and refer it to the pension board for review and recommendation.
Okay, that was my motion. Please hold and refer to the pension board. Bill Number 264, introduced by Councilmembers Erby, Page, Wassinger, O'Meara, Dolan, Stanger, and Quinn.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 264.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilwoman Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 264, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 264 is finally passed.
Bill Number 265, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.